Good evening. We'd like to call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Would you kindly stand to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a couple of announcements before we get going. On behalf of the board, I would like to congratulate Tim Leonelli, Heidi Hernandez, and the Abingdon High School matching band champions for their first place win in their class at the state championship on Sunday. Their impressive score of 89.4 had them outscoring bands twice their size. So we offer them congratulations. Secondly, there is a regional water survey being conducted by the Old Colony Planning Council on drinking water quality, environmental protection, and affordability and reliability. The communities within the Old Colony Planning Council area participating in it, and if you go on the Old Colony Planning Council site, I'm quite sure you can obtain more information as it relates to that. Secondly, on November 18th at 7:00 p.m. here in this room at the town hall, the Open Space and Recreation Plan is holding a meeting to discuss the Open Space and Recreation Plan that's being sponsored by the Old Colony Planning Council. Ancillary to that, just a reminder to everybody that the presidential election is this a week from tomorrow, November 5th. 7:00 a.m. polls are open 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Early voting is still available here at the town hall during regular business hours, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. And Friday will be the last day for early voting, and that expires at 12:30 p.m. And then, of course, you can vote on Election Day. Secondly, the Veterans Administrator is holding the annual Veterans Appreciation at the Council on Aging on Wednesday, November 6th at 10:00 a.m. If you're a veteran, you're certainly welcome to attend. From what I've been informed, unfortunately, if you're a spouse of a veteran and you have to support the veteran to get him there, you're welcome. But unless you're a veteran, because they're planning for dinner and so forth, so be aware of that. The Daughters of the American Revolution are holding a dedication ceremony on Saturday, November 9th at 11:00 a.m. at Mount Vernon Cemetery to dedicate a plaque to all veterans of all wars that are interred in the cemetery. And additionally, on Monday, November 11th at 10:00 a.m., the Tri-Town Veterans Day Parade will take place. Step off from Beaverbrook School, the old junior high school behind the Legion, and go down Washington Adams through North Abingdon Center and finish at Railroad Street right around the corner from the cellar. And lastly, there is a special town meeting on Monday, November 25th, 6:30 p.m. at Abingdon High School, of which we'll be going through the warrant this evening. Anybody else have any other announcements they'd like? Okay, he's seeing a hearing then. First order of business, 6:00 p.m. Fire Chief Jack Glenn update on the FEMA response and firefighter rewards.
Thank you very much. I'll try to make it as brief as I can because I know you've got a busy schedule tonight. First off, about seven months ago, we had that fire over at 500 North Quincy Street, the apartment complex. You folks were terrific in recognizing the people that were involved. I nominated a bunch of firefighters that had specific roles, and the great outcome of that with the Firefighter of the Year awards with the state. We heard back from them, they wouldn't be receiving any type of recognition on stage, but they received letters. They've all been notified of that, and I just wanted to pass that along to the board and thank you again. But the job they did that night, we averred an incredible tragedy, so that's number one. Captain Chris Cotty and 550 paramedic Chris O'Toole standing over there, they were both activated in the aftermath of Hurricane Helene. Chris was activated for a DMAT team, a Disaster Medical Assistance Team, and what he does is goes out, they set up, you know, area hospitals, they treat with medical stuff. He was very active with when the COVID pandemic went through, actually vaccinations on the West Coast. He was very, very active with that. Captain Cotty just walked in the door. He needed a reminder page, Chairman, not me. He just walked in the door. He was with the FEMA Task Force One, and they were involved with a lot of search and rescue. Chris O'Toole was activated for 14 days, Chris?
Captain Cotty was activated doing search and rescue for 22 days. I just wanted to pass along to everybody, I think everybody kind of understands it, but so incredibly proud of the members of our department, the extra skills that they bring. We are such a specialized organization with the fire department, unlike any other fire department that I know of in the area, and I just wanted to recognize what they've done. We're incredibly proud of what they do, and they're making a difference, and so I just wanted to pass that along to the board.
Well, thank you, and I think, you know, clearly, we had mentioned 500 North Quincy Street several times, and, you know, it's heartening to know that you made the nominations and that they've been recognized by the Commonwealth as far as that fire goes. But certainly, you know, Captain Cotty and firefighter paramedic O'Toole, to be able to bring that skill set to the town and be able to be activated as part of a regional team that responds nationwide, I think is a credit, you know, to them, to you, for your leadership as well. And we're certainly proud and thankful for their participation in that, and knowing that we have people on staff that have the caliber of that expertise. So we thank them, you know, on behalf of the board and the town. So thanks very much, guys.
Mr. Chairman, can we just mention the firefighters that received the letters?
Sure.
I absolutely can. Off the top of my head, Roger, it was Deputy Driscoll. It was Captain Kevin Finch, 550 paramedic Josh Nix, 550 paramedic Mike Mustucio, 550 paramedic Matthew Barry, 550 medic...
This is a quiz.
We have the list.
Derrick Mahdi.
Derrick Mahdi. I'm picturing the roles that everyone played in that day. It was a lot that night. And we also nominated some folks from Holbrook as well that were here the night when you folks recognized them, so we recognize them as well. So, Mr. Chairman, if I can shoot through a couple of quick updates that I think is kind of relevant, and I do apologize. So, one of the things that we had recently happen is we had another successful CPR save. And the reason why I want to point that out is because with CPR, we don't normally see that. It's a rarity. But with our program and our department led by Justin Silva, he's our remiss coordinator, along with like Chris and Mike Mustucio, they're constantly on the cutting edge of everything with our medical director, and they're constantly changing things with the Heart Association, going through things. We had one recently in which this person went home, has a lot of work ahead of them, but has a real good chance at having a successful outcome for a good, healthy life. We've had a lot more of those than some of the other departments in the area, and it's just whether it's a lock or the draw, but it's incredible skill. So I wanted to point that out. The reason more so I want to point that out tonight was, and I saw Joe Shea there, so this is going to be interesting. When we first started the paramedic program, Roger, you were the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Kevin, you were the vice chair, Joe, you were on the committee. Getting the ALS system going, this is a tough one. So, when we were getting the system started, one of the cases we had was a gentleman that was 56 years old, he was celebrating his anniversary with his wife at an event at the Polish Club. His name is John Prano, and I don't know if you guys remember the name at all. But so, he came in with his wife, he went into cardiac arrest, we worked on him for 20 minutes, he was lifeless. We went through three rounds of medications, multiple defibrillations, everything. And we were just starting to get a paramedic program here. We were at Social Hospital, but we were just getting it started here. I was the only paramedic at the time, and we worked with Social Hospital. Long story short, he did fantastic. And three days later, he had a pacemaker put in. I've kept up with the family over the years, and this was 27 years ago. I heard from his daughter about three hours ago, and I knew he had been sick, and she said, "Jack, I just wanted to reach out to you and pass along that Dad passed Saturday night." Thank you for an additional 27 years. Thank you for the fact that he got to meet my children, and he got to meet my grandchildren, his grandchildren, and he got to walk both me and my sister down the aisle. So I wanted to pass that along to you guys because we see it, and we make a difference. But for anybody that's thinking, you know, on our job sometimes, we get a little emotional, a little tough with these things, we're making a difference, and that's so meaningful. So I wanted to pass that along because I thought it was interesting. Now, the Board of Selectmen members, I think Liam McLaughlin's the only one that was missing from tonight. So you guys were a part of that. So thank you. It means a lot. Final thing I wanted to touch on briefly and walk away from things was, we're really excited to do some training together with the police department. It's something we've been working on. I'm so excited with the leadership with the police department and the things we're going to be doing. A couple of weeks ago, we had a very, very tragic call, and the only thing I'll say with it is that this call had pretty much every feature you can imagine for the worst stress call you can have. I was so proud of the people I worked with, and I was so proud of the police department and how they handled themselves and our members. And it's an honor to be a part of this town, and that's the God's honest truth. I love the people we work with. That was a tough night, and we've got some great people in town, so I wanted to let you know that as well, too. I'm going to hand off to whoever, but I appreciate the time.
Very good. And you forgot to mention that you were the first paramedic we hired, actually.
Yeah.
Very good. Well, thank you very much, Chief, for those comments. Next, either Chief Wani or Deputy Postel, whoever would like.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity for me to say a few words as well. I echo the sentiments of the fire chief. This is just an awesome opportunity to grow together as a public safety team in this town. I've been here about seven weeks. I just could not be more impressed with the team that we have here. I didn't realize how busy our group is, and I just wanted to run through some numbers because I think people might be surprised. So far this year, our department, this is as of last week, has responded to almost 9,000 calls for service. We've had over 500 arrests. We've responded to 616 crashes and had almost 2,000 car stops. And we're running on a short staff. I know we're working on trying to beef the staff up a little bit. The town manager's been just unreal in his support. But what makes these numbers more impressive is what they do outside of the job. And, you know, like the fire chief was talking about that car crash, that car crash in my 22 years was one of the toughest scenes I've seen. I've seen a lot on this job. And Officer Helena Resendez, who has one of the biggest hearts of anybody I've ever met, saw that it was the young girl's birthday, and she went out birthday shopping the following day because her mom had not left her bedside. So she got a birthday cake and a bunch of presents for Mackenzie, who had turned eight, at Children's Hospital. And that's the type of heart our PD has. On top of the coffee with the cops that we do at the senior center and the high school, we had a bowling event that raised $3,000 in conjunction with the fire department for the Beaverbrook School. And over the last couple of weeks, Officer John Sayers was awarded a gold award from AAA, which is, you know, obviously a nationally recognized company, and then for his efforts in traffic enforcement. Last week, we haven't released it because we're waiting on photographs from the U.S. Attorney's Office, but Lieutenant Justin Simmons received an award from the U.S. Attorney's Office in an absolutely awesome ceremony at the Federal Reserve in Boston last week for his investigation into COVID scams. He, along with a member of the Homeland Security, put a woman away for five years for stealing millions of dollars from people in COVID scams. And then, of course, we had a drive like no other to raise well-needed supplies for those impacted by Hurricane Helene in western North Carolina. And the deputy and I talked about the devastation and that impact, and how it was our jobs to reach out and ask the community for help, and holy moly, did they respond in a big way. And I'm just so proud of this community. I did a show the other day with the town manager, and I asked the members of the town and the viewers who watch the show to join me in my pride for this agency, because I haven't been here for a very long time, but I feel like I've been here forever. And that's a credit to the members, the men and women of the Abington Police Department and the community as a whole. Like, this is incredible. And then, you know, Deputy Chief Postel and Lieutenant Canada making that trip down to, and I'll let Deputy Chief Postel take the mic here, but this was a massive effort in the Abington Police Department. You know, the administrative team, Margaret Frost and Joanne Gillis just packing constantly. Sergeant Doherty just wrapping all of these pallets like a mad band, like it was just, you know, the Resendez family, I couldn't name everybody in our agency. It was just a massive, massive group effort, and it was just so neat to just, I literally, I walk into 215 Central Street, and I feel like I walk amongst giants. So I'm very, very proud to stand here, and I'd like to have Deputy Chief Postel come up and say a few words.
Well, yeah, while he's coming up, I just, if you could please kindly pass along the thanks of the board to Officer Resendez, Officer Sayers, and Lieutenant Simmons on their achievements, and certainly, especially Officer Resendez, you know, having the care and compassion to bring that little girl her birthday present.
I would like to point out, actually, there were two off-duty, non-Abington first responders that lived in the area that I have actually written letters to their chief. It was Trooper Scott Drinkwater and firefighter men's of the Waymouth Fire Department that really jumped in before any of us got there. And, you know, it's a real credit to them as well. So they'll be receiving awards from the Abington Police Department.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Deputy Postel?
Thank you, Chief, and to the members of the board and town manager. For folks that know me, I've been here about seven months now. For folks that know me, I'm not usually a loss for words. But the outpouring of support that this community has shown to folks in my home state of western North Carolina where I'm from has left me very speechless and extremely humbled. And in some ways, a lot of emotions to know that we're able to help communities over 1,000 miles away, to be humanitarians for families and businesses and schools and public safety professionals that have been absolutely left with nothing. And to go home, as I call it, and to see what is left was something that I could never imagine. And for our department and for our partners in the fire department, and let me just say for the folks from the fire department that went to North Carolina to help in the rescue efforts, and I say rescue efforts, thank you from the bottom of my heart as being a native western North Carolinian. The scenes and the sights that I saw and heard about are very difficult to even put into context. But the silver lining and the positiveness that this community has shown, the support from many on the board, many folks sitting in this room, and from members of the community from Abington and the area that have come forth to turn our community room into a warehouse practically, was amazing to see. And again, it reinforces what the chiefs have both said about the foundation, the bedrock of this community. And I can't tell you how proud I am to be a part of this community. And the members of our department that have worked around the clock, that came in and bypassed a lot of their day-to-day work to help make sure that we could get things put together to aid the folks in western North Carolina. And just on behalf of the folks in western North Carolina that we worked with, Lieutenant Canada and I met with in both McDowell, Haywood, and Buncombe County, the resources, the thoughts, the prayers, the volunteerism that went into helping get these resources prepared for that trip down were well-received and appreciative from the folks in western North Carolina. In fact, just today, we received a thank you card from Grace Baptist Church in Marion, North Carolina, which was serving as one of our points and hubs for resources. And there we met with families that were coming in to get resources and supplies and hearing what they've lost and endured over the last several weeks, children that have had nothing. And being able to just lend a lending ear, a helping hand, maybe a shoulder to cry on, a hug, meant a lot to those folks. But more importantly, it meant a lot to Lieutenant Canada and I, because we're able to bring that back here and tell these real stories that we experienced. And again, I just can't thank this community, the support of this board and this government, the support of the residents and others within this community. It's special. And thank you very much.
Very good. Well, thank you, Deputy, and thank you to Lieutenant Canada for you and both of you for going down there. And I'm sure, you know, your family was affected in some way as well, so.
I'll add that my family, by the grace of God, fared well. My hometown was fared well. But areas that I was very familiar with, spent a lot of my time growing up as a small child, did not fare out as well. And they're going to be rebuilding for a while to come. But again, based upon the generosity and the kindness of people from all over, they are a resilient group of folks, and they will be okay. But it's certainly, the resources they've got has been well-received.
Very good. Well, thank you very much for all your help. The hour of 6 o'clock having arrived, we have the fiscal 2025 tax classification hearing from the Board of Assessors. Deputy Assessor Yolanda.
My name is Yolanda. For those who don't know me, and I am the Town Assessor, and I will be doing your fiscal year 25 classification hearing. So why are we here? The purpose of tonight's hearing is to determine the tax policy for the current fiscal year 25. Proposed future budgetary expenses and the potential for future developments, growth, are not relevant in determining whether the tax rate for this fiscal year is a single or split rate. When discussing the tax rate, the Department of Revenue suggests considering the percentage of commercial and industrial properties compared to residential properties. Here are the class percentages. The Board of Selectmen hold a classification hearing each year to determine if the levy gets divided evenly through a single rate or if the tax burden gets shifted between the classes. Here are the current class percentages based on values. So, right there, residential is 90.27, commercial is 7.01, industrial is .84, and personal property is 1.85. Tax rates. Fiscal year '24 versus fiscal year '25. Fiscal year '24 tax rate is 13.38. The proposed tax rate for fiscal year '25 is 13.07. This is a decrease of .31. Will an increased tax burden on the commercial and industrial significantly lower the residential tax burden? Here are the averages. The current value of the average single-family home is 575,302. This is an average increase of 77,325. The taxes will be 7,519. Currently, 60% of all the single-family homes are valued at or below the average. 54 single-family homes are valued over 1 million. The current value of the average commercial property is 1,116,526. This is an average increase of 143,726. The taxes will be 14,592. Currently, 68% of all the commercial properties are valued under 1 million. Impact of the shifts. So if you go to the bottom where it says 1.50, as you can see, the highest shift would result in commercial paying approximately 15% more in taxes, while the residential parcels would only save 5.4%. What is the mix of CNI properties? How much is big business versus mom and pop? The Department of Revenue considers CNI properties valued under 1 million to be small commercial. Currently, 68% of the CNI properties in Abington are valued under 1 million. It should be pointed out that properties like nursing homes and medical offices are classified as commercial, and apartment complexes of any size are classified residential. Do the businesses in town require extraordinary or disproportionate municipal services? An analysis of all the police calls from calendar year 2018, which Jody did in our office, while 29% of the police calls were logged for CNI properties, the overwhelming majority of the calls were not related to the property being a commercial location. So for example, only 16% of the 107 calls to 93937 Bedford Street, which is the Dunkin' Donuts, were related to the business there. The rest were traffic-related. Same thing, we did an analysis of all the calls on fire. The commercial and industrial properties represent about 16% of the calls. The three locations with the most calls were all apartment complexes, which are classified as residential. Will splitting the rate adversely affect small business and drive them out of the community? Would a small commercial exemption help? Splitting the tax rate would significantly increase the CNI taxes while offering very little relief to the residential properties. A small commercial exemption is extremely limited. Only 36 parcels would be potentially eligible, and only 10 of those are owned by Abington residents. Splitting higher than 110 would shift the burden so much that the exemption wouldn't actually give the few eligible parcels any relief. Will it slow big business development? Abington has commercial buildings that are vacant now. Splitting the rate would deter businesses coming in and filling those spaces, and would potentially drive both small and large businesses away. Abington only has 67 CNI parcels that are vacant land. Some are far too small to build on. Even if the five highest values, commercial and industrial properties suddenly doubled in value, it would only drop the percentage of the overall makeup of the town to 88.88 versus 90.27. So, because there's such a difference in the number of CNI versus residential parcels. Do businesses significantly contribute in a non-tax way to the community? Businesses in town, both small and large, have sponsored some sports programs, which helps to defray some costs that the parents may otherwise have to pay. They also donate to town-centric groups They also donate to town-centric groups such as Abington Celebrates and the Summer Concerts. Is it a matter of principle or economics? Between 2003 and 2024, the number of Class 1 residential properties has increased by 587 parcels, bringing it to 5,218 parcels, while the number of Class 3 and 4 has decreased by 25 parcels, bringing it down to 246 parcels. The difference in parcel count makes a split impractical. Since there are so few CNI parcels, a shift would offer minimal benefit to the residential So, residential versus commercial. We have 5,218 residential and 246 commercial. 95% of the total taxable parcels in town are residential. While it is noble to want to ease the tax burden on the residents, it needs to be noted that 22% of the businesses are owned by Abington residents. The registered voters of Abington vote to approve the budget and the levy. This means that more than three-quarters of the business owners in town have absolutely no say in how their tax dollars are spent, and they have no say in the debt exclusions. Here's the schedule of the debt exclusions. So we have the new middle high school, new police station, senior center purchase, high school windows and doors. And then the last column would be the date it's completed. No debt for the fire station or the DPW complex has been added to this fiscal year, which will be added for the next. Here are our historical class percentages in fiscal year 25. As you see, the residential percentage, percentage increased to 90.28. Commercial went down to 7.02. Industrial went, uh, went down to .85, and so did personal property. Should the selectmen choose to shift some of the burden to the CIP, the shift may not be more than 150% of the original burden. So given this restriction, our minimum residential share with a max shift is 85.4183, and the CIP 14.5818. Therefore, the residential tax rate would be 12.36, and the commercial 19.60. What about Proposition 2 and 1/2? Proposition 2 and 1/2 indicates that the overall total taxes for the town cannot increase more than 2 and 1/2% in a given year. But if the townhouse has outstanding debt, shown on Slide 44, the overall tax can't and will go higher than 2 and 1/2%. Proposition 2 and 1/2 does not limit how much a single property's taxes can change. So here's some final bits of information. When determining values, we are governed by Department of Revenue regulations. We must analyze qualified sales from the last full calendar year and adjust accordingly. So for fiscal year 25 values, we must use sales from calendar year 23. Property values get adjusted after the sales analysis each year. Property values are submitted to and certified by the Department of Revenue each year. Property values may change as a result of building permit visits, sales inspections, and/or random inspections. The Department of Revenue requires us to try visit every property at least once in a nine-year period. What if I think my value is too high? If you think the data we base your value on is incorrect, for example, we have you listed as a two-family and you are a single-family, you can file an abatement application. However, an abatement should not be filed simply because you think your taxes are high. Values and taxes are related, yet different. Abetments can only be filed in the month of January. We cannot accept them before January 1st, and we cannot accept them if they are returned or postmarked after February 1st. If you file an application, someone from the assessors' office will visit your property to verify the data. You should submit a list of comparable properties to justify why you think your value is high. There is a presentation on the assessors' website that goes over the process in more There are multiple real estate exemptions that exist. We have disabled veteran, 10% or higher disability, widows, people over 70, blind people. You could potentially receive an exemption, they could potentially receive an exemption on their taxes, but there are guidelines for each type of exemptions. We have a brochure on the website listing the criteria. Abington also has a senior worker program overseen by the Council of Aging Administrator and the Veteran Worker Program overseen by the Veterans Agent. Spaces in these programs are limited, and some eligibility criteria must be met. If you'd like more information, please contact Amy Barrett or Adam Gunn. There are two other options, a small commercial exemption, which we briefly mentioned earlier. The residential exemption qualifying residential properties would get a reduction, but non-eligible residential properties would get an increase. Basically, one-third of the residential properties would pay significantly more, so two-thirds could pay significantly less. And what do towns like Abington do? So listed below are towns like Abington in respective categories. And the categories I have in this slide is population, land area, total value, residential percentage, tax levy, and police budget. Towns in red have a split tax rate. The blue lines have less than Abington, and the yellow lines have more or slightly more than Abington. Another slide, listed below are towns like Abington in respective categories. Fire budget, education budget, single-family homes, condo unit, commercial parcels, and total parcels. Once again, towns in red have a split tax rate. The blue lines have less than Abington, and the yellow lines have more than Abington. So in closing, the Board of Assessors voted to recommend that the selectmen adopt a single tax rate and to not adopt a residential or small commercial exemption.
Thank you. Uh, since this is a public hearing, I'll ask first, uh, is the ready member of the public that wishes to make comment on the presentation? Seeing a hearing none, I'll go to the board. Any questions from the board, members of the board?
That was a fantastic, very thorough presentation.
Very thorough. Yeah, very thorough.
I'll make a motion. We support a single tax rate.
Motion made for a single tax rate. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in the second at any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is show cause hearings for over-permitted number of vehicles. We had initially sent out seven letters, noticed a show cause, of which six have complied as of today. There is only one that we're actually gonna have a hearing on. But just a couple of ground rules, just for the members of the board and the public. This is not a public hearing, it is a hearing held in public. There's a difference. The, um, the licensee has certain rights, and we have to follow a certain procedure. I'm gonna have to swear in the witnesses, uh, and then the board, I'll let the licensee give his, his, uh, presentation. Um, the, we will turn to the, the town representatives to give their comments on the same. Uh, I will then open it up to the board for questions, after which we will take three different votes. The first vote will be to close the hearing. The second vote will be to find whether a violation occurred. Now, the violation can be as simple as currently you have X amount of vehicles on the lot and your license says X. That's a violation. So if we find as find as a fact that a violation occurred, we move to the next phase, which would either be the penalty or modification phase. Uh, when we sent out the letters, I had them put on it to, and I'll read the letter into the record, but basically to suspend, revoke, or modify. So if in our opinion, as find as a fact, and listening to the licensee and the town representatives, we find that, uh, it, it merits modification, then that's certainly something that we can consider. So just so the members of the board know, we'll begin again, uh, the applicant or the licensee should, pardon me, will have the opportunity to present the case unabated and uninterrupted. Um, when we're finished with that, I'll open up to the board for questions. When we're done with the questions, we'll close the hearing. We will then move to find whether a violation occurred. If, if in our opinion a violation occurred, we move to the next phase. Any questions on procedure? If not, um, the first, well, the only applicant we have is Vito's Auto Center at 135 Bedford Street. So one, what I'm gonna do is ask all persons that will be testifying in that matter or presenting evidence to kindly stand, including the town representatives. Kindly stand and raise your right hand. Vito, are you here? Kindly stand, raise your right hand. Okay. Acting in my capacity as a justice of the peace forum within the Commonwealth, I now do ask you, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give in these matters is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Very good. Kindly be seated, let the record reflect, all the witnesses have been sworn, and for the record, we will read into the record. Mr. Vito, I'm sorry on the name.
Vattelaro.
Vattelaro. Vito's Auto Center, 135 Bedford Street, Abington. This is to serve as official notification that the Board of Selectmen behold a show cause hearing on your Class 2 license as to why your license should not be modified, suspended, or revoked, and that you are over the approved amount of vehicles for sale. Your license only allows 12 cars for sale. On a recent inspection by the Building Department, you had, at the time of this letter, 22 vehicles on the premises, that has come down to 20 as of today. The hearing will take place Monday, October 28th, 2024, beginning at 6:10 PM at the Town Hall, Town Hall, Hearing Room, second floor, 500 Goinwood Way, Abington. You are entitled to be represented by counsel and to present evidence and call witnesses if you so desire. The Building Department will conduct another inspection of your premises prior to the hearing and certify to the Board of Selectmen the number of vehicles for sale, and if you come into compliance, the hearing will be waived. Sir, if you wanna come up? As you're coming up, I do wanna state, I went by the property today, and I did notice you do have 20 cars for sale, and I'll, I'll listen to your explanation, and then we can, we can talk about where we're going.
Okay, I have 20 cars on the lot. But some are parts cars, and not even 12 are for sale. So I don't know how to, I have to be able to park cars, to take parts off of them, to make a car.
Right. Okay, so from your standpoint, the vehicles that are on the lot now are, how many are for sale?
Less than 12.
Less than 12.
I marked all the ones that were not for sale, I put stickers on them, and it says right on them, "Not for sale."
Okay. All right. Um, I guess the question from the Building Inspector, thank you. Building Inspector, could you just give us your report on that, please?
Good evening, folks, members of the boards. Sir, um, my office was contacted on September 23rd to conduct the annual inspections for Class 2 licenses. Uh, we did so, there was a total of 34 inspections that we did. Up until today, there were two, um, that were not in compliance. One was the gentleman we just heard from. Um, I've sent my local inspector, Nick Jenks, over to do several inspections over there. Um, the count is right, is 20 vehicles on the lot now. There appears to be enough room for an increase, if that's so what you choose to do. Um, the gentleman has been, uh, very respectful, and he's willing to work with us, and at this point, it's up to you folks to, to make that decision.
Okay. Um, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Does the, are there any concerns on the police of fire?
The police department doesn't have any concerns. It, matters like this, we would assist the, the Building Inspector, sort of to keep the peace if things got tense to any point, uh, in, you know, his enforcement actions, but we don't have any issues at this point right now.
Okay, thank you. Um, members of the board, do you have any questions?
Just so we can clarify for those maybe who are interested in this, I don't know. Um, right now, we're saying his license is for...
12 cars for sale.
12 cars for sale, which he's in compliance with, but we're saying because there's other cars on there, that's what initially caught the inspection, so to speak. So, okay, I just wanna make sure I was understanding of that, that the license is just for those sale, but they can have others there, not for sale, and that doesn't affect it in any way?
Well, that's the debate we're gonna have.
Okay.
Um, any other questions from the board?
I don't have any questions.
Any questions?
Okay, why don't we take a motion to close the hearing?
I move, we close the hearing.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made in the second at any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, the hearing is closed. Question now comes on, did a violation occur? In, in the four corners of the license, if you will, there are 20 vehicles on the lot. Now, he represents that he has less than 12 for sale. Um, I think the question really, to my mind, would be that we would probably should modify the license, because when you go out there to inspect it, we don't know what's for sale and what isn't. I take him at his word that, that there aren't any more than 12. However, I think the license should be modified to reflect that, quite frankly. And I think that we should delineate that there should be X amount for parts and no more than 12 for sale, um, is what I'm thinking. So I guess from the, the technical aspect of things, um, because we don't, at this stage, uh, from a technical standpoint, I think there was a violation, but now we would go to the next step of modifying the license based on, on the clarifications that we have. So I think the, the first question comes on, uh, and I'll make a motion, my own, the chair will make it by his own motion, to find that a violation did occur, and then if that's successful, we'll move to the modification stage. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Sorry, I have a question on that. Do we make these modifications for other licenses as well? If someone has 14 and they happen to have 16 on there, but they're licensed for 14 to sell, do we have modifications saying they can have up to 20 but only sell 14 elsewhere? Or is this something that we're just adding on to this specifically? Cause I don't, sorry, I don't see this as a violation, that if he is 12 and he had 12 for sale, there might be others on the lot. I don't know if there can be clarification on that, but that's how I would read that.
Yeah, well, I think that you have to look at it in its totality. On, on the other licenses, we don't know. And people come up and they say, "I've got a commercial garage license, but I've only got six for sale, but yet you've got 25 vehicles on the lot." There has to be a differentiation.
Yeah, I understand. So then how, if we're gonna put this modification in, how, if we're saying he can have up to 20 but only 12 for sale, how are we gonna keep that going forward, knowing that there's eight? how are we going to keep that going forward, knowing that there's eight potentially for parts? He's going to have to label them like we would on any other lot? So that's why I'm asking, are there other licenses that we've offered this modification to?
There will be going forward. I don't know what it is standing right now, but generally speaking...
This is a new mod, okay.
Generally speaking, what we do is, when somebody comes for an application, we say, "You have 12 for sale, two employee parking, and, you know, two for parts." And that's usually reflected on the license.
Okay. So his license does not show that, is what it is?
Correct.
Okay.
Can I just say something?
Thank you.
I'm the one who spearheaded doing these car counts. And I just want to say this for Vito, who I don't know, who's sitting out there. I'm going to make a motion, and it's going to be based on the building commissioner saying he's been respectful and he's worked with the department. There's a violation, so I'm going to, you know, I seconded that motion. But I'm going to make a motion later to modify your license. You look like you have some room down there, so I'm just going to look to clarify your car count, as Amanda was bringing up. So I don't want you sitting there thinking, "I'm coming after you." That's not what I'm doing, okay?
I don't have a backyard.
No, listen, I know, I went down there and looked, I just, we need to clean it up. And out of all the licenses that we have in town, it's just your one now that we need to, you know, clarify things with you and we'll move forward, so.
I've been here over 30 years, and I've never had this problem before.
Okay, we've closed the hearing.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, so the question comes, did a violation occur? Made and seconded, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, unanimous. Question now comes, motion, I'm assuming, to modify the license by Mr. Woods to include 12 for sale, 6 for parts?
At least 6 for parts.
6 for parts and 2 employees.
Okay.
Does that work for you?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
I'll make that as my motion.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded.
Should we make it a total number of cars, though, because he's saying at least 6, so?
No more than 6.
No more than 6, okay.
Okay. Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted, there you go.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
What I want to do too is bring forward item number five, the status on 201 North Quincy Street, so the police and fire and building do not have to hang around for us. Can I ask the town manager to give us an update on 201 North Quincy?
Well, the building commissioner has been working with the owner of the property. There appears that there's violation, actually two different violations going on there. One with the owner of the property who has multiple vehicles that are not necessarily associated with the Class II license. And the holder of the Class II license actually has had their bond revoked. We had notification of that last week. We did send them a letter that, you know, saying, and we spoke to them in person, that we were aware that their bond was going to be revoked. They had until Friday to replace that bond. They have not done so. So from my office and my perspective, they will get a notice that they have 10 days to come in compliance, starting on the 25th. And if they're not in compliance, then they will have to cease and desist. That is the Class II license. The other part of it, I think I let the building commissioner sort of speak to what's going on with the other vehicles.
Okay, before we get to that, I just want to make sure that for Mr. Disaps, who was here before us and we denied him his license, he's the one that has, the bond has expired.
Correct.
So I would say to you this, that if he does not come up with his bond, as I understand from counsel, he then has, the license is revoked, is that?
Correct.
Okay, then have the building inspector properly serve him with the police, that he can no longer conduct business if he doesn't comply. And then, does that trigger, okay, if he were to come in after the fact with a bond, his license is then reinstated? Or should we show a notice to show causes, what I'm asking?
Yeah, I think that at the very least, it would be a show cause, but it may be a new application as well.
Okay, well, why don't we take it a step?
I think once it's revoked, it's revoked.
All right, then why don't we take it a step at a time on that? And I would ask that the property owner, Mr. Gouldston, be made aware of it so that if, if he should continue to operate in violation of the order, then not only would we take court action, but I think the landlord would have some culpability if he didn't join us in enforcing him to cease and desist. So, and the building inspector can speak to the rest of it, is?
I believe so. Thank you again. So this particular property, 201 North Quincy Street, they've failed multiple inspections, one of which is life and safety, so that obviously is an immediate concern for our department. With regards to that and the overcount on the Class II license, he's been served, the tenant has been served as well as the property owner. The response that we've received so far is that, you know, we brought them in here for a formal meeting, just to, you know, get a sense of what was going on on the lot there. And to our surprise, he was unaware of subletting within the property. So we found out who the tenants were, we spoke to the tenants. There are additional alternative uses within that lot. With our interactions and communication, we had a decent line of communication verbally. And then once we got into formal emails, the last that we heard from Mr. Gouldston, which is the owner, is that he believes he's under the protections of 40A. My response to him was to thoroughly explain the meaning and the verbiage behind 40A, and that the property was not subject to the protections under 40A for the alternative uses, and it can't be used as a canopy for the property. In the meantime, I've been notified that the bond has been revoked, and I've been waiting, awaiting direction, which, which direction to go with that particular property.
Okay, so is Gouldston, Gouldston's position is that he falls under 40A. Our position is that he does not.
Correct.
Okay, I would suggest then we have counsel send a letter to, do we have, does he have a counsel of record?
Not that I'm aware of.
All right, why don't we send a letter to Gouldston explaining the position of the town and further to the point of Disaps, and, you know, we will move further on that. As far as 201 North Quincy as it relates to fire and police, any issues? I know 267 North Quincy is, is okay now, right? Okay.
They're doing great. 201 has an active concern with not passing a life and safety inspection there. So that would be a concern for this, my department, as well as fire. But moving forward, if the bond is revoked and we are to issue a cease and desist for, you know, actions down there, I'm looking for guidance on what to do and how to follow up for that.
Yeah, I think, why don't we put him in contact with the town council?
Okay. That way I can properly serve him and...
Yep.
Do we need that as a motion?
You can if you like.
Whatever it was, I make that motion.
I think we have, unfortunately, it was a status update on the agenda. I don't think it says that we can make a motion, or it wasn't available, right?
It can flow from that.
Yeah, we can make motions on anything.
So a motion made to authorize town council to work with the building commissioner in terms of the property at 201 North Quincy Street for enforcement action. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded at any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, unanimous. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, Elizabeth Shea, the town planner, to request to review and take a vote to adopt the updated hazard mitigation plan.
Good evening. So I feel like we've been doing this for five years. Because we have. We have been doing it for five years. So tonight, I am here to ask for you to review. I sent you guys all a copy of the final plan, the draft, and vote to adopt the plan on behalf of the town. I'm happy to go into an explanation of what this is, if you'd like, but you're already an hour in. The bottom line is, it's going to help public safety, get grants. Every town needs a hazard mitigation plan. Ours is a regional one with Stoughton and Easton. We've been at it for a while. While I'm saying that, I would like to thank, thank the people who helped. Paul was one of them. He served on that committee. And this is how far back it goes, John Nottol, John Stone, Jeannie White, Kelly Johnson, Lindsey Wright, Jody Hurst, Melissa Chiaka, Andrew Nokon, and Jason Harris. For if they gathered data for us, attended meetings, everything. But it is finally done, and FEMA has approved it, MEMA has approved it, has come back. This is literally the final step, for you guys to adopt it, and then we send it back to them. And it's on record.
I make a motion, we adopt the updated hazard mitigation plan.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
Thank you. If you could just sign that document, that's what all has to do with staying.
Okay, one abstention.
And Liz, nice job by the planning department on the grants that just came in, that you guys were behind.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on...
Don't put anything else before us, because I'm going to be working $2 billion of the grant.
Next item on the agenda, Lisa McGovern, the Veterans Benefits Administrator, to recognize Troop 41 of the Boy Scouts. Do you want to just speak off of the sheets then?
Yeah, I'll speak off the sheet.
We're having a little technical difficulties here, so.
All right, so the board has sheets, and the main thing I want to go...
Some copies available up here, if anybody...
Yes, there are also extra copies up here on the table. I would like to honor Troop 41 and the scouts for all that they've done for the veterans community here in Abington. Chris Schultz, our beloved health agent, is here today with one of his scouts. And in the four years that, you know, Adam has been here, you've been supportive, and you've supported quite a few veteran projects. Also want to point out that the PowerPoints were put together by Bob Pratt, who's also an Eagle Scout. And I'm just going to go over a few of the main projects that the Troop 41 and the Boy Scouts have done. So if we go to slide three, the main one is veterans' lots. Since 1987, PAC 41 and Troop 41, years later, as well as Girl Scouts and some Abington High students have been replacing the flags of veterans buried in Mount Vernon Cemetery for Memorial Day. I can't get this, it won't show. And a bit about Troop 41, they were first chartered in 1937. There was a lapse in charter in 1944 due to World War II, but they were rechartered again in 1954 with help from St. Bridget's Church and the American Legion, Dorsey Post 112, as well as with their original sponsor, Jack Shanahan Jr., as the first scout master. And this year marks the 60th anniversary of continuous service. We'll start with a few projects that are key. I have Eagle Scout Cunningham, who mapped out all of our veterans buried in Mount Vernon Cemetery. Also have Eagle Scout Ryan Hatch, who did a facelift of the veterans mound years ago by cleaning the brick, the surrounding flagpole, removing it, stripping it, repainting it, and returning it to the mound in time for Memorial Day. The Eagle Scout Mark Cullum, who did a project to repair grave markers. Also have Eagle Scout Matt Cotton, who created all of the stone street signs that you see in Mount Vernon Cemetery. We have Pat Berry. Eagle Scout's project was to attach medallions to grave markers of all the veterans buried at Mount Vernon. Eagle Scout Joe Dorian, I hope I'm pronouncing that?
Dorian.
Dorian, thank you. Who worked at the Dyer Memorial Library and Archives to help conserve the maps of Mount Vernon Cemetery. During that project, he was able to locate previously unknown veteran graves. And a few years ago, we have Charles Poserski, who replaced the bench in memory of Joe Colontoni. And Eagle Scout Michael O'Leary, who chose to restore and enhance Ladler Field as his Eagle Scout project. Finally, we have Acadia Manley, Troop 41's first female Eagle Scout, who designed and built a display using a map of all the veterans from Abington who died defending our country and buried in Mount Vernon Cemetery using QR code markers, marking the location of these graves. We'd really just like to thank Charles Schultz. We'd like to thank Troop 41 for all the help and support that you've done for veterans in the community throughout the years. And that is all I have. Thank you so much. One more minor thing I've got is we have a putting forth committee, Veterans Banner Committee. Also, the board has a photo of an example of what I'm talking about. There's also copies up here at the table. That's just a mock-up example. You may have seen in towns nearby that have sort of veterans, pictures of veterans, banners along their streetlight posts. So this would be a committee to put together, do all the legwork, set up criteria. They would do that under the direction of the Veterans Agent, Adam Gunn, as well as the Veterans Advisory Council, to put that together, to set up about 100 banners, put across 50 poles throughout Abington. They would work on, you know, tracking the applications, setting up the criteria for that, photos, things like that. The banners would be up for about two years, at which point they'd be taken down, given to the family. And then the next round of banners would go up for about two years before taken down again. We expect this project would take the committee about three years to sort of get going off the ground and running. And we have worked with Samantha Linehan to get that posted up on the website for those that are interested to be part of that committee. It would be a two-person committee, is what we're thinking.
Very good.
Awesome.
Well, thank you very much, and I want to thank the Boy Scouts, Troop 41. They've been through the course of their history, have been an integral part of the town, and they've been... You know, their participation in different events has been phenomenal, and we thank them, you know, for the different projects they've undertaken that have made the town better. If anybody hasn't been to an Eagle Scout ceremony, it's worth going to. Roger and I did attend one this past August at the Legion, and it really is very impressive. And we congratulate them and thank them again for all their hard work. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Pam Howe, the Abington Affordable Housing Trust Committee regarding the center school. Before Pam, come on up, but I just want to give, Ellen Delaney with her, just give a little bit of a history. The center school, the board had voted based on, after, there was two town meeting votes, one in 2017, one in 2018, to declare surplus and authorize the selectmen to dispose and convey the property. There was two studies that were done, one by the Barrett Planning Group and another by, the first one by the Surplus School Building Committee Report. When the town manager developed the RFP to dispose of the center school based on the direction of town meeting, he incorporated some of the recommendations that were enshrined in those reports to... in those reports to craft that. And in doing so, I am going to ask him to give a very brief synopsis on where we stand with the center school RFP, and then we'll go right into Pam.
So we did get some interest on the RFP. We've had several groups that have come out. It has been out on the, out in live for several weeks now. The submissions are due this week on Wednesday. The RFP does incorporate some of the ideas that were put forth by, that have come out of, out of some of the studies that were done. It looks at good reuse of the building, trying to lay it out and make it more desirable for one-bedroom use, and which would lend itself more towards seniors with minimal amount of additional footprint. It also keeps the, the open space wooded area as town open space and converts it back to the town. Overall, like I said, we've gotten some, some good interest in it. When the results come in on Wednesday, I will be reviewing them with the town planner, and the assistant town planner will check them to see if they comply with the minimum qualifications and requirements, and then we'll make a recommendation to the board of selectmen, and it may be that we have, my guess would be that we would have any interested parties who make a submission that meet the minimum criteria, have them come into a board meeting and make a presentation to this board.
Very good. Thank you. Pam?
Hi. I'm just here with Ellen on behalf of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee. And when we were at that selectmen's meeting, we kind of felt a little shocked, a little, you know, blindsided, just simply because we didn't realize it was going to be a vote on the sale of the school at that point. The last we had heard was, you know, the two schools were possibly going to be grouped together, but North School is going to be used, you know, for the fire station, not the fire station, the DPW, I guess, when the new fire station was built, and that everything was going to be put on hold. So we kind of assumed that included both of the schools, because they were going to be kind of lumped together up until that point. So I think we just kind of felt like we were kind of left out of the loop with that whole scenario. A lot of the members of the board now are newer members that weren't on the board when we did these studies, going way back to 2017, 2018, with the, the building study of that committee, and then the surveys with Barrett. So I just kind of feel like I wish that we were in more communication with each other, because we've been working on it for, you know, four or five years now as, as different committees.
Right.
Those reports are available, you know, if anybody on the board now wants to look at them. They were a lot of work. It was a lot of, you know, time and energy. The trust did pay Barrett Consulting, you know, a lot of money to do the surveys and do the reuse, and I think they're just worth looking at if, if you haven't seen all of the reports.
Yeah, I think you correctly point out that I can't speak to what a prior board of selectmen did. Clearly, everybody sitting at the site table was not on the board at the time all this transpired, and it's been in the works for two years now. I think when we look at it, we looked at the fact that two town meetings have voted, you know, authorization and direction to sell them, and then we have the different studies that was incorporated in the RFP. So I don't think there was any conscious attempt for anybody to exclude anybody. I think the question was, looking at the studies, we felt, well, I felt, I can't speak for everybody else, that you had your input into the studies, and therefore that was, your opinions were reflective in the studies. Hence, you know, we moved forward from there. Any questions or comments from other members of the board?
Moving forward, the RFP is part of the RFP, it has to be affordable and senior, so the Affordable Housing Trust would be included later down the road as well, correct? Or no?
Well, there is, there is an affordability component to this.
Okay.
For certain, as a matter of fact, it was a minimum of 25%, but the, the RFP does actually give more weight to somebody who's offering more than that.
Yep.
And there's also a component in there that if they would allow the Affordable Housing Trust to buy down mortgages or assist with down payments, to see if they would involve them in that case too. But at any given point, and we do have actually other developments that are looking to do some friendly type 40Bs, which is what this would be, lip applications, they would go, and we would recommend them to meet with the Affordable Housing Trust.
That's what I was going to ask, the Affordable Housing Trust is not just left out, minute this goes out, you're still included in this. But I understand the frustration heading into that as well. I feel like there's a lot of committees that sometimes don't chat.
Right, yeah, it just kind of came up, and like I said, we were just kind of shocked, because we were just sitting here and taking a vote, and I was like, well, how did this come about? Like, you know?
It sounds like your studies helped us really well getting these RFP out, so maybe pat yourself on the back for that.
Well, we've been waiting, our committee's been waiting and waiting, as we've been asking, it's been on our agenda, like every time we meet, for like the last two years, you know, was there, you know, what's going on, and are we going to get, you know, and it just hadn't materialized, and then all of a sudden, it was like, you know, the vote was taken, and our piece had gone out.
And what we're going to do is that whoever the proposers are, we're going to have them come before the board, and you'll be invited. And they'll make a full presentation for the public, for everybody, so we can all kind of digest what is out there. And it may be that, it may not fit what we're looking for, we don't know.
Yeah.
So we just have to take it a step at a time, but at least we're moving forward with it anyway.
Yeah, and that's where a lot of the other reports and the surveys come in too, because it gives you a pretty good idea of, you know, what, you know, what people valued and, you know, what they didn't, and, you know, it's, so I'm glad everybody knows that all those reports are out there now, and-
Yes.
You can review them, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Pam. Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, request for appointment of the Affordable Housing Trust, Bruce Hughes, the Community Preservation, Meredith Fuller, Abington Cultural Council, Anne Nugent, and Council on Aging, Patricia Leahy.
I make a motion, we appoint Bruce Hughes to the Affordable Housing Trust, Meredith Fuller to Community Preservation, Anne Nugent to Abington Cultural Council, and Patricia Leahy to the Council on Aging.
Motion made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, unanimous. Next item, minutes of September 23, 2024.
Motion approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, unanimous. Status update from a selectman, computer and keys. I understand from the town manager that the computer and keys from Selectmen de Mazzio have now been returned as of today, and-
Yep, everything is returned in good order.
All right. Okay. Minutes, warrant. Okay, set the warrant for the November 25 special town meeting. As the board recalls, we called for a special town meeting on November 25, primarily for the South Shore VOTEC Assessment Agreement amended, amendment that is on the warrant for the several communities within the district. In addition, we have a article for the Community Preservation Budget and the Hancock-Chesnut Street Intersection Improvement Project requiring to take easements that is required by the MassDOT, as well as the layout plan. The first vote will come on setting the warrant of those three articles. Is there a motion?
I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, unanimous, the warrant is set. Question now comes on Selectmen's recommendation. I would just note Finance Committee has recommended favorable action on all three articles. Question one, Article one, the chair moves by his own motion to recommend favorable action on Article one.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous. Article two, Chair moves by his own motion to recommend favorable action on the Community Preservation Budget, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, unanimous.
I'll abstain, just because I was on-
Okay, one abstention.
Yep.
Article three, the Hancock-Chesnut Street Intersection Improvement Project, Chair moves by his own motion to recommend favorable action, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, so voted. I'm going to hop down to number 10, because Amanda is going to recuse herself on number nine, and then we'll be done. So why don't we vote to declare miscellaneous vehicles and equipment as surplus and available for disposal in accordance with Mass General法 Chapter 30B, but I want to author, also authorize the town manager to add or delete, if in his opinion, he finds there's any additional equipment after this vote, or any, anything on here that could be deleted, to give him that authorization. You have before you the current list, is there, a motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted. Article nine, pardon me, going back, going back to my town moderator, there's, number nine, vote on the exemption of municipal, municipal employee disclosure forms. Like of the record, reflect that Selectmen Amanda Zempetti recused herself from the table and left the room. Question before the board is to include, to approve exemptions for the following employees and/or officials who worked the election. This is a technical matter, but because the employees have, have in the past taken vacation on personal day for that day, and this is authorizing them, so there isn't a conflict when they get paid as election workers. The employees are as follows, Nancy Hurst, Jody Hurst, Mary Rogers, Elizabeth Shea, Lindsey Wright, and Amanda Zempetti, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted.
Motion adjourned.
Unanimous, motion made to adjourn, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned, but just to make note, the Selectmen will next meet on November 25 at town meeting at either 5:00 or 5:30. I'll notify the board at the time, depending on the agenda, because November 11 would be our regular meeting, but that's Veterans Day, and I know we'll be marching in the parade.
Yep, I'll be there.
Yes. So with-